Close session. We invite folks to use the raise hand function, star nine via landline in order to be recognized. I see nobody coming forward in room. Are there any hands up via Zoom?
No.
All right, seeing no hands up via Zoom, we're going to go ahead and recess the board of supervisors to close session, and we will reconvene here in chambers at 10:30 a.m. Thank you, everybody.
...
Good morning, I'm Andrea Rosenberg. I'm the Chief Ancillary and Support Services Officer at Natividad. I've been at the hospital for just a little over 20 years. So I've seen us through some rough times and some very exciting times as well. And this is such an honor today to be recognized on our 10th birthday. As we've been saying at the hospital, this is our birthday, our 10th anniversary for the trauma program. And just to echo some of the things that Dr. Walls has said, it really is a village. It's not just one person that has made this program so successful at the hospital and at the county. And just want to make sure we recognize all 1,600 employees that we have at Natividad. Because it's not just the providers and the nurses. And of course, that is very, very, very important. And I don't want to minimize that. But it's all the staff that support the trauma program as well. So I'm going to turn the mic over to Julie, who is over the trauma program. And she has a few words to say as well.
My name is Julie Ramirez. I'm the Trauma Program Director at Natividad. And it's an honor to be here today to receive this resolution in recognizing Natividad for 10 years as the trauma center. And it has been quite a journey. And I'm proud to be part of this team. I think the words that were said by Dr. Walls and Andrea are so true in that Natividad has come a long way. There's an amazing halo effect that has occurred because of the quality care that has been provided and the expert resources that we have here in this county. And I'm proud to be part of that. And it definitely takes a village. It takes a team. And I think it's important to acknowledge all of the staff members that have been part of this. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you. This is you again.
It was awesome.
Andrea, good job. Yeah, so exciting.
We almost got routed from Champa for you guys last week with my husband.
And Mr. Chair, if I could just say, on the trauma center, looking back, certainly one of the best moves this Board of Supervisors has done, it wasn't done alone. I know I was in the legislature at the time. I know labor, in particular SIU, the workforce came through to support this effort. And we look at the history, and it was a difficult one financially for Natividad. But the fact that now you have a Level 2 trauma center where our residents are able to get critical services, life-saving services closer to home, where the families could come, and they don't have to be airlifted or transported to the Silicon Valley, it's really a tremendous service that we have here in our own county and our own communities. And I think when we look at the quality of service from all the employees in the trauma center, it's the highest quality, saving lives. But the community should be proud of reaching this benchmark of time of having this trauma center open and having it as part of our hospital and Natividad. Thank you.
Supervisor, ask you.
Thank you. If I could just echo these comments. We don't comment on our resolutions, but this is a really significant thing, not just for the county of Monterey as a government institution to be able to call Natividad ours, but for our county as a whole to have such incredibly high-quality health care available here for our entire region. It's something that I think we can all be really proud of, to be able to provide exceptional quality care. I think Natividad provides exceptional quality care across the board. I mean, it's why some of us choose to have our children at Natividad. But it's also when you need excellent care to have it close to home. We ended up in the emergency room locally just recently, and they said, nope, this was a trauma case, you need to head over to Natividad. We ended up not needing to transfer, but knowing that it wasn't an air transport, but it would have just been a quick jaunt across town, was one less trauma in addition to, you know, everything else that you're going through. So just so grateful for the team that is committed to providing care to our residents right here in Monterey County, and to anyone in the county that ever doesn't want to but finds themselves needing the care that Natividad provides. We're here for you, and we're committed to continuing to make sure that excellent, excellent providers are here, providing excellent, well-coordinated care. So thank you to all of our folks at Natividad, and thank you to the rest of the community that has continued to support everything that we're doing here to make sure that we're setting the bar on what's possible with local government and county hospital providers. Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll proceed. Thank you so much to our team from Natividad for being here this morning. Please pass our kind regards on to every one of those 1,600 employees who make the service that we offer Monterey County residents, and those who don't live here but happen to be passing through and need their services. So incredibly worthwhile and really top-notch. Congratulations, and happy birthday. All right. With that, we're going to proceed into appointments. Items 4, 5, and 6 are on appointments this morning. Is there a member of this board who wishes to speak to any of these appointments? Hearing and seeing none, we'll go to the public, see if there's any public input on items 4, 5, or 6. I do see someone coming forward in room. We'll give it a second here.
Jim, and I just want to comment about the Historic Resources Board appointment. I'm sure that the person who is being appointed is very competent, and she's been there a long time, I guess 30 years or something. But a couple of years ago, there was a vacancy, and I applied for it online, because they had a form online, and it said that, you know, they received my application, but I never received any correspondence response after that. So I just think that when people apply for a position in the county, that they should respond, because it takes a lot of work to fill out those applications. Respond one way or the other, something. I mean, it's like applying for a job or something. You shouldn't just not even respond. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing nobody else in the room, do we have any hands up via Zoom?
I do see one person, Kate Boyd.
Under Sheriff Boyd.
Supervisor, I was just trying to get you switched over as a panelist. I have no comment on the item.
All right. Seeing no additional comments, we'll close public comment, bring it back to our motion to approve appointments.
I'll make a motion to approve. This, I just wanted to, Ms. Jim's comments.
Because it's not just the providers and the nurses. And of course, that is very, very, very important. And I don't want to minimize that. But it's all the staff that support the trauma program as well. So I'm going to turn the mic over to Julie, who is over the trauma program, and she has a few words to say as well.
My name is Julie Ramirez. I'm the trauma program director at Natividad. And it's an honor to be here today to receive this resolution in recognizing Natividad for 10 years as the trauma center. And it has been quite a journey, and I'm proud to be part of this team. I think the words that were said by Dr. Walls and Andrea are so true in that Natividad has come a long way. There's an amazing halo effect that has occurred because of the quality care that has been provided and the expert resources that we have here in this county. And I'm proud to be part of that. And it takes, it definitely takes a village. It takes a team. And I think it's important to acknowledge all of the staff members that have been part of this. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Nice to see you again.
Yeah.
It was awesome.
Andrea, good job. Yeah, so exciting.
I know. We almost got routed from Champa for you guys last week with my husband.
And Mr. Chair, if I could just say on the trauma center, looking back, certainly one of the best moves this board of supervisors has done. It wasn't done alone. I know I was in the legislature at the time. I know labor, in particular SIU, other workforce came through to support this effort. And we look at the history, and it was a difficult one financially for Natividad. But the fact that now you have a level two trauma center where our residents are able to get critical services closer, life-saving services closer to home, where the families could come and they don't have to be airlifted or transported to the Silicon Valley. It's really a tremendous service that we have here in our own county and our own communities. So, and I think when we look at the quality of service from all the employees in the trauma center, it's the highest quality, saving lives. But the community should be proud of reaching this benchmark of time of having this trauma center open and having it as part of our hospital at Natividad. Thank you.
Supervisor Askew.
Thank you. If I could just, I think, echo these comments. We don't comment on our resolutions, but this is a really significant thing, not just for the county of Monterey as a government institution, to be able to call Natividad ours, but for our county as a whole to have such incredibly high-quality healthcare available here for our entire region. It's something that I think we can all be really proud of, to be able to provide exceptional quality care. I think Natividad provides exceptional quality care across the board. I mean, it's why some of us choose to have our children at Natividad. But it's also when we need, when you need excellent care, to have it close to home. We had, ended up in the emergency room locally just recently, and they said, oh, nope, this was a trauma case. You need to head over to Natividad. We ended up not needing to transfer. But knowing that it was, wasn't an air transport, but it would have just been a quick jaunt across town, was one less trauma in addition to, you know, everything else that you're going through. So just so grateful for our, the team that is committed to providing care to our residents right here in Monterey County and to anyone in the county that ever doesn't want to, but finds himself needing the care that Natividad provides. We're here for you, and we're committed to continuing to make sure that excellent, excellent providers are here, providing excellent, well-coordinated care. So thank you to all of our folks at Natividad, and thank you to the rest of the community that has continued to support everything that we, that we're doing here to make sure that we're, we're setting the bar on what's possible with local government and county hospital providers. Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll proceed. Thank you so much to our team from Natividad for being here this morning. Please pass our kind regards on to every one of the 1,600 employees who make the service that we offer Monterey County residents and those who don't live here but happen to be passing through and need their services. So incredibly worthwhile and really top-notch. Congratulations and happy birthday. All right. With that, we're going to proceed into appointments. Items four, five, and six are on appointments this morning. Is there a member of this board who wishes to speak to any of these appointments? Hearing and seeing none, we'll go to the public. See if there's any public input on items four, five, or six. I do see someone coming forward in room. We'll give it a second here.
Jim, and I just want to comment about the Historic Resources Board appointment. I'm sure that the person who is being appointed is very competent, and she's been there a long time, I guess 30 years or something. But a couple of years ago, there was a vacancy, and I, I applied for it. And online, because they had a form online, and it said that, you know, they received my application. But I never received any correspondence response after that. So I just think that when people apply for a position in the county, that they should respond. Because it takes a lot of work to fill out those applications. Respond one way or the other, something. I mean, it's like applying for a job or something. You shouldn't just not even respond. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing nobody else in the room. Do we have any hands up via Zoom?
I do see one person, Kate Boyd.
Under Sheriff Boyd.
Supervisor, I was just trying to get you switched over as a panelist. I have no comment on the item.
All right. Seeing no additional comments, we'll close public comment. Bring it back to our motion to approve appointments.
I'll make a motion to approve. This, I just wanted to Ms. Jim's comments. If I understood, you said this was a couple of years ago you applied? Yeah. So, okay. But it wasn't in this application for this position particularly. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
I've got a motion. Is there a second? Got a second from Alejo. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
With that, we're at consent. Items 15 through 31. Is there a member of this board who wishes to pull an item from consent for comment, question, or alternative action? Seeing no hands going up, we'll go out to the public. See if there's any member of the public who wishes to remove an item for consent for comment. Seeing nobody in room, we'll go to.
None through Zoom.
All right. With none on Zoom, bring it back. I have a motion from Alejo, second from Askew. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Great. At this point, we're going to open general public comment. Items, giving the public the opportunity to share comments regarding items not on today's agenda. We'll give each speaker two minutes. Please come forward. I see somebody standing at the back of the room. If you're on Zoom, please use a raise hand function or star nine in order to be recognized. Yes.
My name is Meredith Kroll Camp. I am requesting that the supervisors require any and all owners of real property, residential and/or commercial, to document the buildings and sheds and other attributes with copies of all permits attesting to the legal presence of these items. Additionally, any other seller, such as a listing agent, must also require this information from the owner. If 40 years ago, I had been so informed, I would not be in the situation I am now. I would like everyone who owns property in Monterey County to be required to, to be required to provide this information to the next owner of that property. Additionally, the tax assessor must clearly state that what is known to be legal and not what is presumed to be its use. The rest of the two pages that you have on you, I will, I will let you read. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Thank you. My name is Dave Flay. I'm at 1456 Elkhorn Road. About a month ago, I was honored by this board with a resolution recognizing my work as manager of the Elkhorn Slough Reserve. Unfortunately, I got stuck in Southern California on that day. So today, I stand here belatedly to acknowledge your gracious words. Elkhorn Slough Reserve is a national estuarine research reserve, one of now 30 sites where the federal government partners with a state entity to study our nation's estuaries and to provide sites for the local community to enjoy our coastal lands. The system was created as part of the Coastal Zone Management Act. The reserves are perched on the edge of our continent from Maine to Texas, from San Diego to Alaska, Hawaii, and Puerto Rico. Each of these reserves works with local government to achieve the goals of the system. Monterey County has been a partner at the reserves since it was, before it was designated. We've worked extensively with county planning staff for years to get coastal development permits for our projects. Most recently, helped us develop a plan to remove approximately 1,500 eucalyptus trees from the reserve. This was approved by this board and supported by the fire district because it made our community safer. I dare say that together, we helped change attitudes about eucalyptus trees. And Supervisor Church has continued this good work on private lands. As we watch the horror of the Southern California wildfires unfold, I hope we can continue to remove this invasive, highly flammable tree from our landscape. Anyway, I see I'm going to run out of time, but we have a long history of working back to, working together. Former supervisors helped establish the reserve, helped establish the Elkhorn Slough Foundation. Your employees have attended many of our workshops. We've probably had 150 students, 150,000 students come through our programs over the years. Anyway, we're, we've worked together to create an asset for our community. And your recognition of my work is much appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you for your work, and thank you for coming to share those comments. We missed you a couple of weeks ago, but appreciate.
I regret not getting to participate in the discussion about eucalyptus trees at place.
With that, I see nobody else coming forward in room, so I'm going to go to Zoom.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn.
Ending phone number 705.
705. Floor is yours.
Yes. Good morning, Supervisors. Lorna Moffett here. The eucalyptus trees have been targeted, because they're non-native, as the most flammable trees on earth. And in fact, they are the least. And Angel Island was a lesson of that. The only trees that didn't burn at Angel Island were the eucalyptus. The oak burned, everything else burned. It was unstoppable. It was a fire in the first place in the history of Angel Island was because the Native Plant Society came in and said, oh, there's thousands of eucalyptus trees here. They're non-native. We got to cover, cut them down. They're flammable. And so they cut them all down and brush fires, brush started growing. And then as a result, the winds were able to come in, and that's when the first historic fires started. Now, everyone ignores Angel Island's lesson, including this gentleman that just spoke before you. And this ignorance is destroying our planet because these eucalyptus are one of the most powerful oxygen providers, CO2 absorbents that we have. And they last 400 years. The blue gum can live 400 years. And if they're so flammable, why are they still there? You know? It, it's just madness. It's pure madness. It's war on trees. When it's our own lifestyles and our own buildings that are causing these flaming, flaming conditions. So I really urge you to start looking at the lessons that Angel Island provided all of us. And do not listen to the rhetoric of the Native Plant Society, which was born from Monsanto. Monsanto, Neri Jackson, public relations man, for roundup, started the California Exotic Pest Plant Council. And they went to all the little garden.
Thank you for your comments. We're at time, Ms. Moffett. Thank you. We're going to go to our next speaker.
Aaron Rosen.
Mr. Rosen, the floor is yours.
Hello, Supervisors. Last week, we got to speak for two minutes, not, last month, at the end of the session, we got to speak for two minutes. Then Mr. Panetta called in, and I guess all the rules don't apply to him because when he called in during public comment, he got over five minutes. So I guess there's no hard and fast rules about the length of public comment if you're somebody who's kind of considered to be an important political elite. What I'm calling about today is to ask you to, to request Mr. Panetta follow the laws of our country. You see, due to World War II and the Nazis and all the horrible atrocities and things that have happened, certain laws were passed that prohibit humanitarian aid from going to regimes that do certain horrible things like, you know, horrible genocides and won't allow food to come in. And, and that's illegal. The Leahy Law, the Leahy Law. He's very upset what's happening, that our country is illegally aiding the government of Israel to do an extermination campaign against the Palestinian people. Around 200 journalists have already been killed. They're open targets. Little girl is becoming a symbol like Anne Frank, who was in the ambulance. They got the okay to bring the ambulance in. As soon as they picked her up, they blew up the ambulance and her, that Israeli government did. So Panetta is allowing and enabling this horrible genocide with no leverage. We, leverage is important. We don't, we shouldn't give money unconditionally to anybody. This is our tax money that's being used to support a foreign government's atrocities. And the atrocities are only stirring up the whole region and making everything worse. Besides, it's illegal, and Mr. Panetta should not be in Congress. And if you want to celebrate him and, you know, and give him awards, or he gives you awards, I mean, just think about what he's supporting. And so I'm asking you to please give Congressman Member Panetta direction to create a world of peace and stand up for peace. Instead of condemning the ICC for Netanyahu's arrest warrant, which is quite justified. He's also, they're also calling for the arrest of Hamas leaders. So.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. We're at time.
Thank you very much.
Any other hands up?
E. Aguilar.
Aguilar, this is your moment. You have two minutes.
Hello. Good afternoon. I hope you guys are all doing well, especially those who have family in Southern California. I'm ready to make a public comment on agenda item number nine, adopt the resolution to reestablish the county of Monterey as a welcoming county.
Right now, so we'll, we'll get to that when we get to item eight. Thank you very much.
Fantastic. Okay. I'm at work. Sorry.
All right. Any other hands up at this point, Sammy?
None.
All right. With no more hands up, we'll close general public comment and go to item nine. And we'll ask staff to make the presentation on the resolution reestablishing the county of Monterey as a welcoming county.
Staff will help prepare this resolution in partnership with Supervisor Alejo's office. And this resolution will be to reestablish the welcoming resolution that was adopted by your board years ago. Now, there is a secondary action attached to this item, and it's related to an amount needed for public service announcements related to the committee's work. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Supervisor Alejo.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues and our CAO's office. On behalf of our Monterey County Immigrant Rights Ad Hoc Committee, we bring this updated welcoming county resolution to the board of supervisors in light of the proposed massive immigration detention and deportation plans by our incoming administration that will and has already created anxiety, fear, intimidation within our immigrant communities.
Hi. Good work, Ken. Glad I was able.
Thank you. We also know that it would undermine public safety by not having crime victims and witnesses come forward. It will impact our county services provided through agencies like our health department, social services department, our local courts, our school districts, and many other key services in the community. It would also impact our workforce that highly depend on immigrant labor, but could also impact many other local businesses. It could also impact our nation's food supply, food prices, construction costs, tourism, childcare availability, and many other vital services that Americans expect to continue. In the end, any plans for massive immigration enforcement will have an adverse impact on tens of thousands of families in our county when nearly one-third of our residents are foreign-born. And it will impact tens of thousands of more in indirect ways. So this matter touches all our lives. This resolution is essentially the resolution our board adopted back in 2017. But we tightened up the language to align with what is already state law, that no county resources will be used to enforce immigration law unless required under state law, federal law, or court order. We received feedback and input from this resolution from our county department heads, including our sheriff, DA, public defender, health department, social services, CAO, and county council. And we also ran this through our ad hoc committee as well and received feedback and input from them as well. I want to thank our county department leaders for sharing their concerns on what this means for our local immigrant workers and their families. I also want to thank our stakeholders who are participating in the ad hoc committee. Everybody that we reached out to stepped up to help. And we have over 60 key community leaders, businesses, legal advocates, county leaders, who are all part of this effort and are also concerned about our local workers and their families. This resolution did try to stay away from some of the loaded language used in other jurisdictions because we wanted the focus to remain on the people and the message that they are welcome here in our county. The people whose lives are already impacted, who are already worrying about their future here, especially in light of the recent border patrol enforcement actions in Kern and Fresno counties. We stand with those other local governments across California, law enforcement agencies, farm bureaus, and community leaders and organizations who are also standing up for their local residents in those respective areas. These immigrant workers are the backbone of our local economy. They are the hard-working people who only want to give their families a better life and contribute to our local communities in so many ways. They are farmworkers, small business owners. They are restaurant and hotel employees. They are student leaders at places like Hartnell College and MPC. And they are parents leaders in our local schools as well. They were called essential workers during the pandemic when our nation needed them, and now they are asking us to be there for them. The Salinas Valley and Monterey County as a whole has a long, rich history of different waves of immigrants coming to this beautiful place to find a better life and realize the American dream. We take pride in that history, that hard work and that sacrifice and those dreams that brought so many diverse groups of people here. And today, it is the fabric of who we are as a county. We need to remind ourselves of that amazing and resilient history that our diverse families brought to this very place. As a grandson of migrant farmworkers and immigrants, this holds a special place in my heart as well. My grandfather came to this country in the 1940s as a bracero worker for Southern Pacific Railroad. And he later brought his family in the 1950s to labor as migrant farmworkers in South Texas's Rio Grande Valley and throughout different valleys in California. My grandfather only went to the third grade, and my grandmother never had a chance to attend school at all in Mexico. But here in the United States, she made sure all her kids finished high school. And four of her five sons later served proudly in the United States Army. And that was something that they were always proud of, that their children contributed to this, to military service to our nation. And today, I sit here on this very dais as a result of their immigrant dreams, aspirations, and hard work. So many of us today feel the strong sense of responsibility to help others also realize their American dreams here as well. This is a time to once again show leadership and to reassure our immigrant workers, youth, and families that we got their backs and that we'll do all possible to protect them, defend their rights, and continue to find a better life here in Monterey County. So I ask our colleagues to support this resolution today and also the added resources so we could provide those educational, PSAs, Public Service Announcements on TV, on radio, social media. And I really want to thank our staff, Nick Pascoli in particular, for already printing over 20,000 red Know Your Rights cards. I think 13,000 have already been distributed to community organizations. I just got a request from the Alice Hall School District yesterday for another thousand. So people want these cards. We want the information. And this is an example of Monterey County showing tremendous leadership, once again, in defense of our immigrant communities. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor. With that, I'll turn to see if there's any comments from our colleagues. I'll go to Supervisor Daniels.
I have comments at the appropriate time, but this is simply a question. And Supervisor Alejo, thank you so much for this work. I got a call in my office yesterday from a person whose life relies on a caregiver, and the caregiver was letting her know that she might not be, if she just doesn't come one day. This is why. And she was referring to something that occurred over the weekend in Salinas. And so my question is how a Monterey County resolution provides protections in our individual jurisdictions. I know that each individual jurisdiction has its own police department, for example. But what the person reported was that there were ICE agents in her, in her community, and a coworker of her neighbor was picked up. I didn't know if anyone has heard of anything like that already happening. And if it is, what bounds does a county ordinance have in terms of providing any protections, if so, in our jurisdictions?
If I could give a try at that, Supervisor Daniels, there's a lot of rumors spreading of ICE or Border Patrol being in different communities. Many of them have not been verified. So that is another piece of this, is not trying to create unnecessary fear and anxiety by people having posts that are not based on actual facts. There were rumors that they were in Gilroy, Seaside, Salinas. But when, usually when ICE or Border Patrol come into a community, they will at least alert the Salinas Police Department or the Sheriff's Department. And up until this day, I haven't had any confirmed confirmations of notices of enforcement actions and actions within Monterey County as of yet. So to that. And then under, in 2017, when we did our first resolution, then the city of Salinas passed their own. I think Solidad passed one. Several other cities throughout our county followed and utilized our resolution or crafted their own. Some are, Salinas in particular is already going to do the same as we're doing today. But state law is state law. That SB 54, the California Values Act, is uniform. And that's what our resolution aligns with. This, where it says, local governments cannot utilize local resources for enforcing immigration law. And Attorney General Rob Bonta was here last Friday, and they also have a complaint number so that if community members are seeing public agencies attempting to enforce immigration law, there's a way to report that to the Attorney General's office as well.
Thank you. That is very helpful, and I appreciate the background. I do have a couple of comments. If I could just. I do have a couple of comments, if I could just make them. One, I obviously was not here when you all did this work in the past, and I'm 100% supportive of the welcoming resolution and the allocation. And I just want to say, as someone who's gone through the last election cycle with everyone else in this room and in this county, you know, for me, and I feel, I'm getting to know all of you, and you get to know a little bit about my background, but when one group of individuals in our community is made the scapegoat, and we are told endlessly that it is because of this group of people that we have gun violence, that we have high housing costs, that we have long wait times in emergency rooms, that we have low wages, that our school systems are broken, that's what fed, that's what fuels the need to do something like this. And just the point that I want to make in terms of how personal this is for me, you know, my grandmother was was a community member as a Jewish child in Germany in the 1930s that was, in the same way, told it is, you know, it is the Jews' fault that we have high housing costs, our businesses are broken, there's rising crime. I mean, it's all the same. And for her, it was going to school one day in, I think around 1933, where she was told she can no longer be an elementary school student, later was forced to wear a Star of David on her overcoat, and you guys know the rest of the story. And so it's really important that we protect the people in our community. This is forward action. This is action that is in advance of anything happening. Hopefully, it is just rumors, like you said, it makes perfect sense what Supervisor Alejo just shared. But I just, I want to say that I support this from also a place of playing the tape in my own family, knowing what happens and how important it is that we take this action and all the actions to come to make sure that, you know, we know that there isn't one population that's responsible for everything that's bad in our society, and it's our responsibility to really take that bias and racism head-on and deal with it as well. And I think we'll have to continue to do that over the next four years. And so I'm proud to be here today to support this resolution and to do all the work that comes after it as well. Thank you.
Supervisor Church.
Sure. I think maybe some of the rumors that flowed around probably are stemming recently from what the real incident happened in Kern County a few days ago, last week. I don't know the exact date it was, but there was an ICE raid there at a gas station or eatery, something along that line, and I know quite a few individuals were picked up. You know, I just want to point out that the whole problem that we're facing that comes up with immigration issue is really because the federal government has just sat around for decades and decades, and both parties are to blame, not finding a solution to something that needs to be done because we are talking about, for many people, being essential workers. You look around at the world, and you see these slow growth rates in places like Japan and Europe, and you look at the United States, which doesn't have a 1% growth rate, it has a 2% to 3% growth rate, and that is fueled by immigrants. It's always been fueled by immigrants for hundreds of years. People that come in, do a job that either native-born Americans are already fully employed with and are higher up in a scale, the immigrants usually come in and do the work and fill in areas where there's a need. You know, you don't come as an immigrant and then have a job created for you. And we have a historically low unemployment rate in this country, everywhere in this country, and to take away that many people who are immigrants coming in, whatever their status is, is going to be hugely detrimental to the economy. It will create, you know, negative growth, that particularly upset this county because of their reliance on agriculture. And it's, you know, this problem is never going to be resolved until the federal government decides that it's time to stop making political points and really, you know, worry about what is doing the right thing, and, you know, not just for people, but for our economy.
Supervisor Raskin?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'll start by saying thank you to my colleagues for being so clear about who we are as a county, who we are on this issue and on so many of our values. Sitting on ledge committee, we immediately were able to very clearly articulate and make amendments to our county legislative platform. We'll be adding a whole section on Monterey County values where we articulate very clearly with no uncertain terms our values on immigration, on care and protection of our undocumented residents, on our commitment to civil rights, on our commitment to LGBTQ plus rights, on our commitment to women's rights and reproductive rights. It was unlike so many other places where it wasn't clear where the county or where the local government stands. I think our community has been clear with us, and so it was easy for us to be really clear in our written documents and to our staff and to our community. This is where we're going to, this is where we're going to lay out our platform moving forward. So I'm so, so proud that we can be proactive as we move forward. So thank you to the whole team that has come together over the holidays to build the ad hoc committee, to all the members of the community. I know that there are many more who are interested in participating in the ad hoc committee. I've been forwarding contact information over, so I do just want to, as we continue forward, find the right ways to make sure that we're as transparent and inclusive with participation in those spaces as possible. So that's just my plea and my ask to the group that's meeting. And I want to thank everyone in the community. There are so many different efforts underway to communicate our values and to create spaces where we can offer Know Your Rights trainings, where we can offer places of safety, where we can, you know, our schools are each creating their own networks of community, our faith-based organizations are creating spaces of safety and education and community. So to all of those groups that are individually organizing and activating safe places and information and resource sharing, thank you for everything that you're doing. I attended an MPUSD organized training with the Watsonville Law Center, I mean, within a week of the election for Know Your Rights training. And one of the messages that the trainer, Adriana Melgoza, had very clearly communicated to a standing-room-only audience in Seaside was that we're not going to live in fear, that we collectively have the choice to acknowledge the realities that are in front of us, to be prepared, and to move forward in partnership with one another, but to live our life and find the joy and not to proceed around from a place of fear. And I think that by taking the actions that we're taking, by being really clear, by being prepared, we collectively can help each other know that we're not alone, no one in our county is alone, that we're in this together, and that we're going to collectively take the steps necessary so that we can be as safe as possible and we can be as prepared as possible for whatever is going to come next. So having said all of that, I'm absolutely prepared to support the resolution today. I'm so grateful that we have our communications team. Nick Pasquale bringing you on was a great step that we did proactively, I think, even a couple of years prior, and it has continued to be the right decision again and again and again, to have you and your team prepared to help us put a website together, be prepared to roll out public service announcements, so fully support the funding that we are prepared to be being proposed today to support. And let me make sure I'm not missing anything. The only other thing I just want to call out and that I think we need to be particularly mindful of here in Monterey County is the fact that we do have a significant amount of land that is federal land, specific to the Presidio of Monterey and the Garrison within District Four, that is not, it is federal land governed by Presidio Police, which are federal police. And so there are some nuances in terms of how we message safety of our local officers. So while our local police departments have made it very clear, we have resolutions that have been passed previously in 2017 by the County of Monterey, by the City of Seaside, by the City of Solidad, by the City of Salinas, very clearly stating that they won't be using local resources and that their police are safe for everyone in the community. That does not apply to the Presidio Police, who are federal officers. So there are some nuances that we need to be very sensitive to in that regard, and I know that applies in District Three as well. So I just want to make sure we're open, with eyes open to how we move forward. So with that, thank you for the work. I look forward to continuing to be clear about our values and doing everything that we can to not live in fear, but to be proactive about how we are prepared moving forward.
Thank you, Supervisor. At this point, I'll see if we have any public input on this item. See one person coming forward in the room. We'll go ahead and give you the floor first, and then we'll go to our folks on Zoom, invite folks to use the raise hand function, star nine, be a landline to be recognized.
Okay. So I'm Eloise Shim. I'm a Salinas resident, and I just wanted to alert you to the red flag of, with the Monterey County Board of Education, there have been some scam calls to people about if their child has truancy issues, that they have to pay them $3,000 or they're going to go to jail kind of thing. So people should be aware of that, that there are scam calls to instill fear on people.
Thank you, Eloise. We'll go to Zoom now.
We have Brian Rosen.
Mr. Rosen, the floor is yours. Mr. Rosen? All right, let's go to the next person. We'll come back.
Aguilar.
Hi, good morning to the supervisors. I hope you guys are doing well. I'm ready to make a public comment on item number nine. As a 20-year resident of East Salinas, I'm voicing my utmost support for this resolution. It's common sense and something that will benefit the entire county. And additionally, I just wanted to point out something that has been concerning me about a particular supervisor of mine, Supervisor Alejo. I'm pleased to see that we have some similarities. My grandpa was also a bracero. But I'm concerned because I know you care about refugees and immigrants, but I also know you're very in support of Israel, and I just can't accept what they do to Palestinians, the violence that is enacted in Palestine by Israel that you support, Supervisor Alejo, is resulting in a huge refugee crisis, and you are someone that cares about refugees. So I would like, you know, I'd be happy to talk with you at any moment to show you the similarities that Palestinian refugees have with our immigrant community. There's a lot of similarities, and I already know you and I have something in common with our family, having people in the bracero program, and I just, it's just very concerning to me that I have a supervisor who is in support of Israel and the violence, you know, that they are enacting on the Palestinian people. It's very concerning to me as a longtime resident of Salinas and someone who really cares about my community and the type of people that are in charge. So yeah, I just want to highlight that to you. It's concerning to me. I'd love to talk to you about how we have a lot in common, more than you think.
All right. Who else you have, Sammy?
And the number 705.
705, the floor is yours. 705, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Hear me?
We can now.
Yes. Oh, thank you. Lorna Moffett here. I think if we're going to do justice to the immigrants and the immigrants that come here, we have to understand why they're coming here. They love their country, they want to stay in their country, but unfortunately, they can't. And a lot of that reason happens to be with our corporations that are allowing the militarization of those countries to force their people to work in conditions that are intolerable and with very, very low pay. And if they complain in any way, they are shot. That's what's going on. And every one of you supervisors need to see El Norte to understand what's really truly going on. So unless we can heal these people from in their country and help them, then we're going to have this influx, influx of people that are desperate and need our help, and we have to help them because we are responsible. We're responsible every time we buy a cheap, you know, cup of coffee or cocoa or whatever. So it's very important, supervisors, I hope that you will be the beginning of that dialogue and continue it so that these people don't have to come to this country if they want to stay in their own. Thank you.
Anybody else?
James Martinez.
Mr. Martinez, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Manos Diaz. Can you guys hear me?
Can.
Wonderful. Good morning. My name is James Martinez. I'm a Policy and Programs Assistant with MIPA, and I just want to take this opportunity to commend you in hopes that you guys do adopt this resolution. It's important to know and understand that our undocumented relatives here in the valley have been the heartbeat of the agriculture industry, and they contribute to a billion-dollar industry, right? And due to a recent study, an in-depth study that was published by the Institute on Taxation and Economic Policy, it highlighted that our undocumented relatives contribute to $9.6 billion in federal, state, and local taxes in 2022, and out of this, $37.3 billion went to state and local governments. It's important to understand how much our undocumented relatives contribute to our economy, and not only that, it's important to really have the support of our representatives, especially here in the Salinas Valley, to know that they are not required to live in fear, but that they have the elected officials and officials in office that are here to stand up for those that can't stand up for themselves. A resolution is a great start, but I think, you know, it's more importantly of essence to really stand up as a whole, to really exemplify our support for our community, because at the end of the day, if we do not support them, who is, right? And I just really want to commend you guys for adopting this, and I encourage everyone to sign on to this, and I'm really looking forward to see what direction we go moving forward. Thank you very much.
Anyone else on Zoom?
George Villa.
George Villa, floor is yours. Mr. Villa?
All right, can you hear me?
Can now.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, everyone. My name is George Villa. I am also with MIPA. I'm the Policy and Program Manager. I'm also in support of this resolution. I commend the Board of Supervisors for their work and putting their face on the limelight. We know there's a lot of anxiety and fear happening in our communities. It feels like it's like back in the Prop 187 days, so thank you for personalizing your family stories. We are in support of protecting and serving our undocumented population under SB 54. As Alejo mentioned, you know, we are, this is a law that is protecting local efforts to protect and serve immigrants. We also suggest that we continue to, you know, share those Know Your Rights cards, create spaces, revise offering, handle the form, you know, curriculum for our community. Just yesterday at Team Villa Boxing Night, I heard one you share, "Hey, Coach, my heart rate is increasing, it's fast." And I said, "Well, has this happened before?" He said, "Oh, it happens all the time." "When?" He said, "As soon as we got this new president." And so that really made me think about how many other young people are in fear of what's happening right now. I know there's a fire happening, it's really embarrassing for ICE agents to be, you know, extracting law-abiding citizens from their homes and deporting them when there's a fire happening. So, you know, I just wanted to, again, thank you for ensuring that, you know, the Board is supporting the immigrant population, and we continue to look forward to working with our community to invest and create more outcomes and public safety for our community. Thank you.
Next person on Zoom.
I see Brian Rosen.
Mr. Rosen, you back with us?
Hello, can you?
We can now.
Yes, hi, can you, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi. I just want to say that I don't think you're going to, this is going to be a feel-good measure that's not going to do a lot of good for immigrants because the whole system of illegality is going to continue. And when you have an illegal, when people are illegal, or of course, they're And when you have an illegal, when people are illegal, or of course, they're called undocumented workers, that makes it sound better, but there still is an illegal system where they're working illegally and they're not protected. And an illegal system is subject to abuses, pesticide spraying, there's all kinds of problems that people face when they're part of an illegal system. So if you want to really, truly make a difference, ask Congressman Panetta to introduce legislation for a legal immigration system. That way, we don't drive down wages and citizens are more likely to take the jobs. We offer people fair wages that come from other countries. They come when they're needed. They can work here for a certain amount of time. I mean, every country, countries like Sweden take care of their citizens first and foremost. Guess what? They treat their immigrants better than we treat ours, even though they take care of their citizens first and foremost. So everybody needs to be respected. As far as Palestinians are concerned, they're the exception to the rule. Apparently, it's okay to kill little babies, shoot them in the head, and children, and all their representatives, almost except for a handful, are going along with this genocide. So it does seem to show a very troubling inconsistency and possibly hypocrisy and a lack of real values, and I'm very concerned about that, and I wish you would do something about that. But I don't think you're going to make things much better for immigrants just by declaring it a welcoming community. They're still going to be abused because you, unless you change and have a system where people come here legally, legally and regulated, everybody is overseeing and watched.
We're at time. Thank you, Mr. Rosen. We'll go to the next person.
Thank you.
Phone number ending 837.
Go to the next, anybody else on Zoom?
I do see someone under panelist Diana Jimenez.
Diana?
Thank you. Thank you and good morning. I'd like to thank each of you on the board for your comments and for supporting this resolution. Even though it is symbolic, it sends a positive message to some of our most vulnerable community members. And I'd like to share a story that happened to me at 15, which I think is relevant now. As if, starting at age 11, I had to work picking strawberries with my parents. I remember one day, I might have been 13 or 14, we're picking strawberries, beautiful day like this, sunny, and all of a sudden I heard people screaming and yelling, and I looked up and they were running because there were at least three or four ICE trucks and vans running after them like animals, rounding them up, mothers, fathers, and all they were doing was working, doing the labor that most of us now, most of us don't want to do. My family did it, and I want to emphasize that I am seventh-generation American and Texan on my father's side. So I wasn't illegal, not undocumented, but I have sympathy for the people that continue to work in the fields, that again, are doing all the work, whether it's washing dishes or cleaning hotels, doing all the work that most of us don't want to do. And we do need to send a message that we do care. We care about human beings, we care about families. So thank you so much for taking a stand on this.
Thank you, Diana. Anybody else on Zoom?
No more.
All right. Seeing no other hands up on Zoom, I did see one more person in the room who wanted to speak. Go ahead and come forward.
Board Supervisors, my name is Joe, resident of the County of Monterey. And I just, I don't have a speech today, but I appreciate the words of every one of you. This is a very challenging time that we're living in, historical times, I would say. And I know that the work that every one of you do as a representative of all the residents of this county, it's got to be challenging, very challenging. I've got my own opinions based on my experiences. However, really what I would like to say is that, you know, when I'm listening to all you talk here today, I think about my family lineage. You know, I hear you always talking Supervisor Lopez about, you know, Gonzalez. My grandparents were dairy farmers there, started the Nidel Cafe Truck Stop and the Cookery, which is now Dudley's, and the Alan J Cafe, and my family has the Holly Farm in Garnet Valley, and my father started Salinas Valley Electric Company. And I remember, I remember the immigration buses in the early 80s here in Salinas. But I also think about the health and welfare and long-term stability of this community. I think about law enforcement that want to go home safe and alive to the family members. And the representation of the county and the Public Defender's Office and the DA's Office that need to have adequate resources to defend this community. There's a lot of issues that need to be addressed in this county that involve bad actors associated with illegal immigration, and that's from multiple nations, more than 100 countries. I'm concerned because we're in a defense community, and our former Secretary of Defense Director CIA, White House Chief of Staff Secretary Panetta once said to me, it's not what you know, it's not who you know, it's what who you know knows. Our greatest threat to national security is not knowing who is in our country and what they're doing. So I wish you all the best of luck in these challenging times. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else in the room? All right, seeing no other hands up, we'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the dais. I did not have a chance yet to share some comments. I too want to thank Supervisor Alejo for taking the lead on the ad hoc committee as our chair. It's been an honor to serve on that committee, as short-lived as it's been so far. The work we've been able to accomplish in just a couple months, I think, is felt, heard, and needed by our community. I want to thank Nick Pasquale and your team for making sure that even through the holidays, the work was being completed. Part of that work is to, one of the comments made about this not having an impact, this, it's not just a resolution that we're asking for approval from this board today, but also airing PSAs, which have critical information for a community who doesn't have a written language, even as a spoken language, and making sure that that PSA reaches the community in a meaningful way, in a way that they understand and can absorb the information to be prepared should they find themselves in a situation is important. I do believe that that will have an impact. I do believe that it will be a benefit to our community. And so I too, like many who have spoken up here, my father is an immigrant, and my father came from Mexico after being born in Juventino Rosas, Mexico, in Huanahuato, and came here to work. He chased the strawberries and landed in Watsonville. And he got, somebody opened the door for him and showed him that education was the path to a more prosperous future. I know a lot of people look at me and say, ah, you started a little higher than everyone else, perhaps because your father did well. Well, he started in the fields, and yes, he gave me more opportunities than he had, but he always reminded me it was because of the lessons that he had learned, picking strawberries in Watsonville, fennel in Salinas, and other crops around this country as a young child. Now we sit here today, knowing that there's two things that push people faster and further than anything else, fear and hope. And so many that came here with hope now live with fear. I've had children come talk to me at grocery stores and tell me they're being bullied and share with me text messages that some of their peers sent them, letting them know that they've been selected for deportation, and they need to have their bags packed and ready to go. On February 21st, somebody will be at their door at 6:00 in the morning. Imagine being a child in middle school and receiving that text, right? I've had mothers come to me and say, my child is a citizen. I am not going to leave, I'm not going to take my child back to where I came from. The opportunity is here. Imagine being a mother with a young child, and I'm talking under five, making that decision, having to have a plan prepared for what happens when you're put in a position to have to make that decision. And yes, it is a fear that they're living with every single day, having to have plans prepared should that come to pass. But having to make those decisions in their mind today is traumatic. Having to prepare plans for should that come to pass is something that they will live with for the rest of their lives. And so I'm prepared to support this today. I'm prepared to support my community. I know that a lot of folks will say that, ah, but, you know, criminals, no. That's somebody attempting to push us into a corner to make a decision based on language. The system is broken. The immigration system for our nation is absolutely shattered. And much to Supervisor Church's point, I believe both parties over time have used that to their political advantage to gain votes, and that is an atrocity in itself. It's time to fix it. It's time to put forward real solutions. And I, to the comment that asking Mr. Panetta to do something, I can tell you that for the last four years that I've gone back to DC to sit with him, he has done something. He and Zoloff kind of put forward FISMA, which is the Food Safety Modernization Act, which within it does solve large problems for immigration. They're trying, but again, the larger issues that we have of a shattered system are what are causing these problems for our communities, knowing, again, to Supervisor Church's point, the need that we have in this county, in this state, and in this country for more folks to come do their life's work with us, to put food on our nation's table, to feed our soldiers overseas, to feed our allies in other countries. Everybody's dependent on the salad bowl, and it's time that we start taking care of those people who've shown up to do the work, rather than allowing them to be scapegoated and use fear as a tool against them when they came here with hope and a willingness to work hard to help us do what we do best, which is grow nutritious crops to feed the world, provide world-class resorts along the coast, or whatever other field they choose to try their hand at. This country is one of opportunity. The American dream is not dead, and we don't need to create a scapegoat, to Supervisor Daniels' point, in order to feel united as a country. We have so much to be proud of, and we should focus on that. Hope can be a unifying force as well. Don't give in to the fear. Focus on who we are as people, and let's move forward. I'm proud that I've been able to work on this resolution with Supervisor Alejo, and with that, I'll conclude my comments, as I'm sure he'll want to make the motion.
Yes, I definitely move that we approve this today, but I wanted to thank all our colleagues for your comments and to those who made comments during, the public comments on this item. But I wanted to say that this is more than a symbolic resolution. It's much more than that. I think there's very few counties in California where you see people of different industries like ag and hospitality, our law enforcement, our elected leaders, our school districts, our healthcare leaders, many different other stakeholders, local attorneys and CBOs have come together because they know this, how important this is to our community. To have that reassuring message and unity in support of our immigrant communities means so much at this critical time. But along with that, this board in December reaffirmed our efforts to engage in legal advocacy, to use our county council's office to support immigrants, to use our legislative advocacy in Sacramento and in Washington to support bills and budgets that advance the interests and improve the lives of immigrants within our county and across California, on our education rights efforts. To have a website already up, I think we're the first county with a bilingual website that already has many different links to critical information that is vital to our immigrant communities, and also those videos that Supervisor Lopez talked about, already in six languages, Spanish, English, and four indigenous languages that are primarily spoken within our county. No county has done that so far, none. To have over 20,000 cards already being distributed throughout our county, no county has done that. And now to be able to prove and have ads run that are essentially a 30-second version of that red card that will be in Spanish, on TV and radio, and social media, also, no other county has yet done that. So, and we're also one of the few counties that had invited, I invited Attorney General Rob Bonta to come here, and he not only shared good information, but he also talked about other aspects, the scams that happen in these moments where people try to take advantage of immigrant families. Historically, they've been the notarios, the notaries, who try to charge fees and capitalize on people's fears and sometimes putting them even in a worse legal position with paperwork filed that they perhaps were not eligible for. So there's many pieces to that, more that we're going to work on. Our ad hoc committee is proud that we have our first forum coming on February 12th in partnership with the Salinas Union High School District at the Alasa High School Gym. But we are making plans, and we will circle with our colleagues here. We're trying to do one in February and in early March, one in Greenfield, one in Seaside, one in Paharo. Those are all coming, and we will circle with the supervisors in those areas to lock down a date and a location, and then work on getting that information out when those forums will be in those communities as well. But I didn't want to just respond, undocumented workers have the same work, employment rights as it every other work in California, whether it's wage and law, wage and hour law, housing conditions, calosia protections, pesticides. We have the most rigorous protections in, at a party at any state in our nation, and those rights apply to undocumented workers as well as documented workers. And I say that as a former CRLA farm worker rights attorney. And I also want to make clear that our county has been very proactive in supporting legislation that advances the interest of immigrants, whether it's the comprehensive immigration reform bills, whether it's DACA or the Dream Act for our young people, whether it's ag jobs legislation for our agricultural workers, whether it's TPS extensions for many of our Central American, as we know, we have many Salvadoran immigrants in our county. I think Annette had created a memo where we, I think, almost five pages of every single legislative effort that we've done over the last six years or so through our legislative program. So I want to be clear to our public that we have been proactive today, we are proactive today, but we've been proactive for years now in many different ways for immigrants communities. So this is important today. I want to make sure our community knows about that upcoming forum on February 12th. We're going to try to air it live on social media and on YouTube, so people don't even have to drive there, wherever they live throughout the county. Each of our forums will be aired live, recorded to watch later, and on YouTube and on social media, because we're trying to make, use technology to make our information as accessible as possible to every resident of our county. With that, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I make that motion and support.
Happy to second it. With that, I'll go ahead and ask every member in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. With that, we're going to jump into our next item, which is the last one before lunch, to receive a notice of adjustment on the annual salary of members of the board of supervisors. We'll go to Andreas Piper for that presentation.
Good morning, Chair Lopez, members of the board. This is to receive notice of adjustment of the annual salary of the members of the board of supervisors in accordance with Section 2.04370C of the County of Monterey Code, consistent with the Superior Court Judge salary adjustment of 0.3226% effective July 1, 2024, with implementation of the salary adjustment on January 25, 2025. Please note, the adjustment provided in this section are automatic, therefore board action is not required or necessary for the adjustment to go into effect.
Thank you, Andreas. Any comments from the dais? Seeing none, we'll go out to the public, see if there's any public input on item 10. See no one in room?
None via Zoom.
No hands up via Zoom. We'll close public comment, bring it back, and consider the presentation received. With that, we'll recess for lunch and reconvene here at 1:30. Thank you. Thank you.
At this point, I'm going to turn to Diego Celis for the announcement from the interpreter.
Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Diego Celis. Seré su intérprete en español e inglés para la reunión de hoy. Si usted está planeando hacer un comentario y necesita servicio de intérprete, por favor, hablar lenta y suficientemente fuerte para que yo lo escuche. Favor hacer una pausa al final de sus oraciones para asegurarse de que tengo la oportunidad de interpretarle. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Diego. With that, we're going to jump into item 11, which is the consideration of proposed board supervisor's appointments to various standing committees, non-county entities, and ad hoc committees. I'll turn it over to Nick Chulos for presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I believe Karina Bukanovich from our office is also online today for this. As you stated, we have several appointments placed before the board that need to be made for 2025. Starting off first with the standing committees, and I'm going to ask Karina to put that overhead on at this point. There are 12 standing committees of the board, and for the members of the public that might be listening in, these are two board members assigned to various committees. There are 12 of them altogether that meet on a regular basis, that have specific topic areas which are covered. And Karina, maybe you can expand that just a little bit more, if you possibly can. These are based on a schedule that the board, or a policy that the board adopted in 2022 to create a rotational basis for the way that these represent, these committees are staffed by the board members. They are three-year terms, and we're beginning the third year here. And you can see, Mr. Chairman and board members, where the rotation would place the various board members to these different 12 standing committees of the board. What we're asking you to do today is to ratify this because the board actually previously approved this schedule several years ago. So technically, we're asking that you ratify this, this action today. The policy that you adopted also provides for the board members to exchange assignments if the board members wish to. For example, if one board member wants to, would prefer to be on a specific committee and will exchange that with another board member. But that exchange needs to be done at the beginning of the year, the way the policy reads currently. The one thing we wanted to point out to the board, there's been discussion over the last year about whether the homelessness committee should, should remain as a separate standing committee of the board or be combined with Health, Housing, and Human Services Committee. At the time the homelessness committee was created, it was felt that there was a need for a separate committee. There's been discussion back and forth on both sides of that issue, and I think one of the things we wanted from the board today was direction on what you would like to do on that particular issue. But the, the actual assignments as approved in the rotational policy are given here for your consideration. The other thing to point out is that one of the standing committees of the, or one of the ad hoc committees of the board will be meeting this year to talk about the rotational schedule. There's been some question as to whether the schedule could be done in such a ways to be more randomized. I believe Supervisor Church brought that up in previous discussions, and so there is a, an ad hoc committee of Supervisor Church and Supervisor Daniels to look at that particular issue. But, Mr. Chairman, on the matter of the standing committees, the first item on the, sort of a subset of your actions today, that's what's before you now.
So let's start with that, looking here at the standing committees, any adjustments, changes, recommendations from the board?
Well, just to get to the question that Nick presented, because we had this debate where there was enough issues to talk about having the separate homelessness committee versus the Health, Housing, and Human Services. Because when we created the homelessness, we added the extra H, and it was the 4-H committee. Because it made, for me, it made logic sense when we're talking about homelessness, it's talked about all those other pieces that are related. And, and all together with all four subject matter, I think Chris and I were on that committee. Even then, we had issue items. There were sometimes we would cancel the meetings because it wasn't an issue. And I think it's even more so now when we have one committee just facing homelessness. I think many of our meetings haven't been consistent in terms of substance, substantive issues to discuss. We get a good attendance from our, many of our homelessness service providers, but our meetings are not as frequent. So I'm good with keeping it another year, but I think eventually, I think we should look at recombining those, in my opinion. I think, staff-wise, the 4-H committee had like one point person, I think it was Rosemary for a while when we were there. But it was rotating, depending on the issue, was Health Department, Social Services, Public Works, if there was some issue going on. Whatever the issue was, different staff would rotate, presenting homelessness just as Roxanne as the lead and bringing those issues forward, whatever she's bringing, or Supervisor Askew and I are bringing forward to her, but it hasn't been as, I don't know, I just, I just think that all these conversations we're talking about are coming up, care court and other issues like that, that are big, that are bold, that are big resources. Like, we should be talking about homelessness with those other pieces that are all, all interact with each other throughout the entire year. So that, so that's where I'm at. If you want to try this one more year, I'm fine, but hopefully.
I know we've tried the homelessness thing broken out. Is anybody really committed to keeping it separate?
I just have a couple of questions, as I think I might be thinking it should be combined, but how often did it meet this last year?
I think half the time, if I remember correctly.
Okay.
But Roxanne would have the accurate.
How many times is that?
I think it's once a quarter, once every two months.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I think homelessness, I mean, we met on a regular basis. It was, you know, every month or every other month was the, it was as as called, kind of as issues came up, but it met fairly regularly on a, and there were topics that needed to be discussed and that Roxanne was looking for direction on. So I thought it was a productive space for work. Could it be combined? It probably could definitely be combined. And I think one of the challenges is, is with the standing committees, they're really helpful for staff to get information and for the public to have access to information that our department staff are working on. But because of Brown Act and because of just the way that we're organized, other board members don't necessarily know what's happening in committees, so I wouldn't be able to tell you what's happening in committees that I'm not a member of. So it would be difficult for me to tell you, should we combine them? Well, I don't know how busy the other, the Triple H committee was and, you know, how regular. I think there's a lot of information that I would hope the Triple H committee is regularly reviewing. I'll be joining it this year, so I'll be able to know more and be able to better weigh in, like, is there? But I, I think, I think we could adjust timing for and prioritization of agenda for whatever we needed to do. I can't anticipate, I can't imagine that they wouldn't be able to be combined. But it was helpful to have homelessness a space for the issues of, we have a lot of work going on in that space, and it was really helpful for Roxanne, I think, to have that dedicated time for presentations. We were able to bring the, the federal and California integrated homelessness present, presenters in to talk about the coordinated plans. We were able to bring CSAC at-home plan presentations in. We regularly had, you know, 50 or 60 people on the committee calls. So I do know that there was interest in the topics that were being presented and discussed.
So on the other side of that, just kind of what's driving my opinion too, and I think you would agree with this, Supervisor Church, last year, we did not have very robust Triple H meetings. They were few and far between, and there just wasn't a lot there. And so I'm hearing, well, if we had both, it would probably be a full agenda, a solid one, but without it, then we're, yeah. Because I think we canceled half, if not more, of ours this year, just because there was nothing to bring forward.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of, of combining these. It's just like a good time.
Yeah, and the only, the only unique piece with the homelessness committee is because it had me as a member, because I was, I'm the chair of the Continuum of Care, right? And that's on homelessness funding, the county gets streams, and then there's the independent grants to cities like King City and Salinas. They not only got incumbent resolution fund grants, but they also administer an annual funding stream, the ESG funding stream. It's small, it's a little under a million dollars, but they administer it. It used to be under Social Services, but when Elliot Robbins, someone was here, was like, if you guys want to administer that, because back then it was like only 200,000. It's gone up to almost a million. But that's a separate funding stream that go to the COCs from the state. And, and usually having the coordination to, on some of these projects, we get the city grant money, but then the county social services puts in money, and then our COC has put in money. All together, we've been able to get projects off the ground. Some of those got, you know, backtrack because of Shangala, but, but none of us, it was that, that type of coordination and collaboration between all those entities that helped some of these get off the ground, where otherwise they wouldn't be able to do it alone. The cities wouldn't be able to do it alone. The, the, the COC couldn't do it alone, and the counties couldn't do it alone. But all three coming together has really, I think, been effective in getting some of these efforts accomplished. And even seeking some grants, the cities don't have behavioral health services, so partnering with the county, some of these jurisdictions have been able, been successful because we are applying as partners on some of these.
Is there an ask there, Supervisor Alejo?
So that's why, I, I don't know, because it, it screws up here, because there's a, you know, on the Triple H committee, it's groups three and four. I'm fine keeping that, but then you just lose that element of not having me.
I might have a solution for you there. I'm going to go Supervisor Church?
Yeah, my, my question was, when I might relate to the solution here, is I'm assuming for this year, it's districts four and one on the homelessness committee again. Is it the third year for District One, or does it move to District Two?
Is your mic on? I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
That's why it has an X on there, because it's, it's whoever's chair of the Continuum of Care, Leadership Council.
So they, it's.
And that committee did not exist before a couple of years ago. We only.
Well, I got it, yeah. Okay, I'm just, yeah.
That's why they created a place, whoever's chair.
So it's whoever's chair and then, and then districts three or four?
That was.
Districts two and five are never a part of that, for some reason.
Well, so it was all, the other seats were always rotating. I think it was three, four, or five would go back to one, but one's already there, so it would go back to two, right? You're just not on the, outboard, you wouldn't be until '28, if homelessness continued. Well, homelessness will continue, if the homelessness committee.
Yeah, and we just started the homelessness on, in that 2023 year, so it's only been, this is the third year.
Well, anyway, I'm just trying to understand the.
My recommendation for a solution, if everyone's okay with that, is my staff would love it if I had one less committee. And so Supervisor Alejo, I'm happy to give you the, what will be a 4-H committee there to keep that for one more year, that, that, a soft handover, right? Allowing you to keep that period and that transition with the two.
I'm good with that.
You good with that? Okay. So we're going to plug in District One there at the top of the Triple H committee, rather than three, and then we will delete homelessness as a committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any other issues folks want to address while we're on this slide? Back to 4-H, yeah.
It's combined.
Yeah.
That's what your proposal, yes.
Correct.
Understand.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And let's go to the next.
Okay, so the next item is the appointments to what are called the non-county entities. These are the joint powers agencies and miscellaneous other appointments that are not standing committees of the board. The process that we're trying this year, it's a pilot program. Last week, as you know, the board members submitted forms in advance of the meeting, which were included in the packet that indicate board member interest in the, being appointed to various of these so-called non-county entity committees. The chair has reviewed those requests, and what's included in the red line version in your packet, and we can put it up on the screen if the chair would, would prefer, is the chair's recommendation of the, how those various non-county entities would be handled in terms of appointments. So what we are recommending today is that the board consider the recommendations of the chair and discuss those recommendations, and then make whatever decision and direction you give us today on how those appointments should be handled. Karina, if you can expand that one a little bit more too, that would be great. Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you want to go through page by page, there's a couple of pages to this attachment, or just open it for general discussion, your preference.
I think we've all reviewed it. I'm sure there's a few that are going to be hot topics, so why don't we just let folks jump in on those that they don't agree on and kind of shorten the process in that respect if it works.
Thank you. Okay.
Anybody want to jump in first? Supervisor Daniels.
Why not? I will say, not on this list, but I'm looking forward to being on the, on the other committee, that's the ad hoc committee that talks about all of this, because it's always strikes me as a very weird way to start your relationship with your colleagues, especially the first meeting of the year. But I think this process has been way more streamlined and, and hopefully less contentious. I, I want to start by saying that in case I stepped on any toes, I didn't identify alternate positions in my first attempt at filling this out. So I am happy to be the alternate on the Coalition of Homeless Service Providers Leadership Council. I'm appreciative of that, that, that appointment and, and looking forward to that service if it's what my, my colleagues decide. In regards to the Monterey Bay Air Resources District, if there is a desire to, to retain in District Five one of the primaries, I would love that. And if that's not, if that's not possible, I'm, I'm happy to accept the alternate position. In regards to LAFCO, and this is the, the super difficult one, but on the heels of the last election and being the representative of District Five, you know, the, the decision that everyone's so familiar with, obviously, the latent powers activation decision, was, was very difficult for many folks in the fifth district and in the fourth district to, to stomach. And the reason I put my name in for a, a primary position, or checked the box for LAFCO, is, is as that plays out, in the event that that is to come back, I would really like to be part of that conversation. I mean, you know, I really feel like there is, public water is a desire of so many people in our district and, and a voice at the table from the district that, that I think sort of understands the water picture very broadly, but also understands why this is so important. of understands the water picture very broadly, but also understands why this is so important to our, to our constituency and why it's so important that this plays out in the courts where it is right now. So not to get down into the weeds too, too far, you know, at least for the next year, I would really like the opportunity to retain that primary seat alongside Supervisor Wendy Root Askew. And if you are amenable to it, Supervisor Lopez, in, you know, moving to the alternate seat, I would, I would hopefully be able to maintain the, the areas as a voting member when I'm at the table that I know are important to you when it comes to housing and the building of affordable housing throughout our county and in particular in South County. But I would just really ask to my, my colleagues that, and this was, this was a big one on the campaign trail and it's important to me. And I'd, I'd really like to retain that seat that Supervisor Adams had alongside Supervisor Askew, if possible.
Anyone else on, any of them, including this one?
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so I'm happy to, I think I'm currently serving as the leadership council for the Coalition Alternate. Happy to pass that over to District Five. I know Kate has done a ton of work in the space of homelessness and would be a great, a, a great leader to work with you Supervisor Alejo at the Coalition. So happy to support that change. In regards to Monterey Bay Air Resources District, if the, the recommendation here would be to change out District Five and District, I guess a couple of changes, but it would be to put District Five on the alternate seat and putting District One as the primary. If you felt strongly, Kate, on, on being a primary, I'd be happy to trade out alternate for you, if that was a position that you felt strongly about. Or we could trade off, you know, if there's meetings that you can attend that I'm not able. I know I've been struggling to get to a few of those meetings. So however, if you have a strong opinion about that, speak up now. I'm happy to trade that with you. And then for LAFCO, I think for many of the reasons that, and again, this one, for as long as I think I've been paying attention to this board, that seat has been the one. We have made it through a number of pretty significant decisions at LAFCO. It continues to be a space where there's a lot of big issues that come before both our local LAFCO as well as the state, sort of LAFCO issues. We've, we were able, I think, we were able last year to make it through some policy changes that I think provided some good guidance for how we move forward with ag mitigation policies. And the, one of the biggest issues that is likely to find its way back potentially in the, in the next year as the eminent domain case makes its way forward, is the issue of activation of latent powers. And so I do think it's important that the peninsula remains present with a voice in those seats. So I would ask for support to maintain the status quo with District Four and Five as the primary seats, having District Three continue on as the alternate for the coming year. So those would be my requests. And I think those were the only changes that were worth, that needed to be mentioned. I know we can continue the discussion, but I will go ahead and make a motion to support Chair Lopez's recommendations with the one exception of maintaining status quo LAFCO appointments for District Four and District Five as primary with District Three remaining as the alternate seat.
Anyone else?
On, on other items, on other?
Whatever you want.
Okay. I wasn't sure since we had a motion thrown out here.
There's a second on the motion, so.
Okay, I, I just.
I'll second the motion.
So, but I'm not talking to the motion, so. Okay. I, I'm trying to understand why some of these agencies we are with, for example, we don't have a, a voting position, like, I've been on the Arts Council for a couple of years. There's no, it's not a voting position. And I'm trying to figure out why the Arts Council is a part of this. And I thought, well, maybe it's, you know, because we get a lot of funding from TOT, but we're not, we don't have anybody on the Film Commission. We don't have anybody on, on Visitors, or?
We do.
Or we do. Sorry. You do, we do. But nobody on the Film Commission. But is that the reason that we're there? But do you have a vote on the film, on the, on the, on the, on the board of the visitor?
You have to defer to someone who knows.
Yes.
You do.
MCCVB, yes, there, it's a voting member.
There is. So why is there a voting member on the Arts Council?
So as I remember, when I spent a decade on the Arts Council, it was an ex officio member, right? It wasn't.
Yeah.
And so it was just a byproduct of the time when it was formulated and the TOT commitment was made that a seat would be given to always have some guidance in the room. And honestly, the, the member of the Board of Supervisors, I think, only attended once a year when I was there and it was typically right ahead of the budget season to hear what the council had done with the money, to be better able to come and share with the colleagues what had happened on that front. That's always sort of been the position, but.
Maybe it, it was that way with that because I had to experience that. But, okay, that's helpful on the explanation onto it, on why, on why it's there. So thank you.
Supervisor Alejo.
If I could just add, just on, on that question, it is interesting because even when I joined the Behavioral Health Commission, I took over for you, I had to ask, do I have a vote on here? Because one, it's, some are, you serve the ex officio role, and others you, you actually do have a vote. So Behavioral Health, you do have a vote, Military Veterans Affairs, all the veteran leaders have votes. I'm just there as a liaison, right? And, and that's not unique to this body. When I was in the legislature, the speaker would appoint us to different other agencies. I was the coastal conservancy for, I think, almost all my six years. So I would attend these meetings all over the state, but I would sit there and not have a vote. I just get to, as an ex officio, participate. And certainly when things came up that were related to projects in our area, they, they kind of lean towards you because you're an ex officio member there. But yeah, you definitely didn't have a vote on some of those. So it's, it's not unique to, to us, other bodies, sort of that same role.
So I, I know there's a motion on the floor and I'll just stay for me. I am hoping to stay on LAFCO as a voting member this go around. I understand where my colleagues are coming from. But for me, I think just a small bit of frustration comes from the latent powers conversation and that we've been told that they weren't necessary, right? When that's been, the public line has been, well, those aren't necessary. But if that's the basis for staying, I know what is coming is the housing in my district, right? That is, we've got two major applications that have been moving for years and I know are coming to fruition this year. And as we talk about wanting to solve the issues, I've already been missing from some of the conversations that I intentionally showed up and gave public comment and then walked away from, like the ag preservation conversation, just because it would have been awkward to have three or four board members in the room at one time. And so I know that as my district is expected moving into the future to carry a big burden in terms of solving a lot of issues for all of our district's housing needs, it feels like my district deserves somebody at the table to have those conver, to be part of those conversations with a firm voice. And I, I know that for the last few years, it has not been that way. And I get that. I have the experience as a former chair and a former member of Cal LAFCO. And so that was the reason that I made the recommendation I did. But as always, I lean towards five. I know that there's still not a single voting Latino on that board, right? And that, it still kind of rubs me the wrong way in Monterey County where we're 60% Latino. And so I, you know, those are some of the issues and the reason that I did make the recommendation that I did moving forward.
And Mr. Chairman, that, and, and for our colleague Supervisor Daniels, I, I think Chris and I have raised that before, and you've probably heard us in previous meetings about a county that is 60% Latino, 70% people of color, and no Latinos on LAFCO. And then just among this board, not, you know, we have two voting members on this board from peninsula districts and no supervisory district that has a vote from the Salinas Valley. There's three seats on this side. I think 60% of our residents are in the Salinas Valley side and to not have a vote representing the Salinas Valley is also for me, is inequitable. And I hear your, exactly, I know if I was in your shoes, I'd, I'd be saying the same thing. So I hear you loud and clear, but I just want to express on our side why Supervisor Lopez and I, who used to be voting members of LAFCO, feel strongly. And we've been consistent on just every opportunity to raise a, the Salinas Valley needs a vote on, and Latinos, the Latino community needs to vote on LAFCO. Because many of these go way back. We struggled similarly in the, back in the 19, late 1990s with Santa Cruz LAFCO, same issue. I even wrote an op ed. I was very active in, in pushing for Latino representation on the Santa Cruz LAFCO, because all those issues in South Santa Cruz County on housing and otherwise were very political, just like they are here in our county. And we found ourselves, our communities, oftentimes in those decision making, didn't have a voice on there. And we were begging North Santa Cruz County to please let Watson will have some housing and some additional recreation space for the community. It just brings back all those memories that goes back decades. Thank you.
Supervisor Church.
Just to chime in a little bit there, and, you know, I understand there's lots, everybody has good reasons onto here and on what they're supporting and where they want to be. I, when I ran for this office, I made a, a promise to support the public water based on the vote out of there. And I feel obligated on that. As long as the latent powers aren't, you know, haven't been resolved, that I gotta take the same position onto there because that was a, a promise I made. And that's just where I'm standing at on there.
All right. I can count to three. So with that, let's open a public comment. I've got a motion and a second. I'm going to see if there's anybody in the room who wishes to speak to this. I do see Eloise coming forward. So while she does that, I'll remind folks on Zoom who wish to comment, they'll need to use the raise hand function, star nine via landline in order to be recognized.
So I'm Eloise Shim and I'm a Salinas resident. And I just wanted to comment that the, the chart before with the standing committee, the standing committees, it had the cannabis changing the, the fourth and fifth districts for that standing committee to the one and three for 26 and 27. And I'm wondering why you're making the change, that you're taking out the fifth district, especially since you recently had the big cannabis bust in the Las Padres area there. And so, yeah, I'm just wondering why it would just be District One and District Three, which is all kind of like south of, of the Salinas area on cannabis? It doesn't seem right to me, but.
I'll, I'll answer that when the, when the right time comes here in a second, Eloise. Let's see if we've got anybody via Zoom. Oh, I got one more in the room, Joe.
Good afternoon. For Supervisors, Joe Cabbage, resident of the city of Seaside. And Supervisor Lopez, I just want to shout out to you. I'm now semi-retired, have a lot of time on my hands. I've got a broad range of knowledge background. And I'd be interested in working to support any one of you on any committees or commissions or anything that benefits health, welfare and long-term stability of this community. So please keep my name, you know, a little mark next to my name and, and shout out to me because I, I'm very eager to participate in this community. I'm not interested in running for any political offices of any sort, but I do want to use my time in a way that can support you in your endeavors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joe. Do we have any hands up via Zoom?
None via Zoom.
All right. At this point, I'll close public comment, bring it back into, address Ms. Shim. I'll take you back to when we started the rotation conversation two, three years ago. And at the time, there were certain committees that we were firm on should not rotate or should rotate in different ways. One of those that we talked about earlier was the homelessness committee. When we split that off two years ago, there was a feeling that whoever sat at the helm of the Lead Me Home Coalition should always have a seat at that table as well. And so that's why in that chart you saw an X, right, demarcating that that seat would always hold. We did the same with the third and cannabis, given the fact that the majority of cannabis is produced in the third district. And the other seat, other than the third, would always rotate. Because there was a desire, when we've established that committee, I think there was a perception that it was going to be, where there was going to be a lot of money flowing through and from and to in a very influential body lately. Of course, it's felt a lot more like triage, right, trying to keep that industry to an extent feasible or viable in Monterey County. And so that is the reason that the third is always there and the other seat rotates amongst. Just, just for a little historical context on why it sits, and I believe that's in the footnotes at the bottom of the document.
Correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Yeah, and District Five is, is on cannabis this year. And it would switch next year, 2026 it would switch.
And I think they would have rotated off already, wasn't it Supervisor Askew, who actually intentionally flipped with Supervisor Adams at the time to keep the fifth there?
Mm-hmm.
So there's been a lot of parts moving in order to keep the fifth present, given the desire. Okay, so with that, I have a motion and a second. And at this point, I'm going to interpret that as being the non-county entities as well as the standing committees. But we, the ad hocks, were, were they part of the motion or not? Because we hadn't reviewed them yet. So I wanted to give that a second. So I'm going to take the first two as the motion, if that's okay? So I've got motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The opposition? Motion carries. With that, we'll go back to you for ad hocks.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And if I could ask Karina to, the chart you just had up, but show the bottom half of the first page, Karina, which is the ad hoc committees. And there are eight total ad hoc committees of the board. I believe from your discussion last week, your intent was to maintain the ad hoc committee membership. There've been a little change of the one that involves the review of the calendar schedule. But the one that, for discussion today and where we need the board to make an appointment is two members of the board to serve as a Measure AA Oversight Ad Hoc Committee. And the purpose of that committee, just for the sake of the public's information, is to determine the most appropriate ground rules for expenditure of Measure AA funds and to recommend that back to the board.
And so I'll share with my colleagues my hope, and I forgot to put this in, and the recommendations was to have two and three there. But I'll just throw that out there as a recommendation. Supervisor Askew.
Oops, sorry. I can absolutely support that. I'll just say, a whole group of folks worked really, really hard to get Measure AA passed. And I would just ask that we were able to submit the names of some additional people who I think have some opinions about, that would like to have, be able to weigh in with the ad hoc committee, who also played significant roles in public outreach on the campaign to help get it passed, who I think their voices need to be heard as part of the, the process. So I can, I'll make that motion to approve the ad hocks with the appointment of District Two and Three to the Measure AA, developing the Measure AA Oversight Committee.
Is there a second?
Happy to second.
All right. Got a motion and a second. I will go out one more time for public comment just on the ad hocks at this point. Seeing nobody in room. Anybody via Zoom?
None via Zoom.
All right. I'll close public comment, bring it back Supervisor Alejo.
Just a question on the tenant commissioner, because I think Supervisor Askew and I agreed to join that in, on October 15th, but I, I don't think there's been follow through on staff.
Oh, I can speak to that.
Okay, great. Because I just, I agreed to do it and I said, the holidays came and here we are, and then year, nothing happened.
Yeah. I think that Housing Authority has been working on their side to solicit applications and to get the applications prepared. So they should be following up with us at some point.
Okay. So that should be a short-term assignment and then.
It should be a short-term assignment, yeah.
Next year.
Perfect. All right. Then with that, I will call the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. With that, we have concluded.
There's one more, Mr. Chairman.
Ah, which one did I miss?
Sorry. It's the Groundwater Sustainability Agency Working Group Appointment. Yeah, it's, it's primarily, as my understanding is, it has to do with the SEMEX area and it has to do with part of a settlement discussion. This working group would meet very infrequently, is my understanding. We're requesting one board member be appointed and, and to appoint the CAO or her designee as an alternate.
Supervisor Askew.
Yeah, I did mention this at our last meeting. This is one that I think would be appropriate for District Four to, to take. And I'd be happy to have the CAO fill in as the alternate.
I'll make that a motion.
Second.
I got a second from Supervisor Church. We'll go out, public comment on this particular item. I don't see anybody coming forward in room.
None via Zoom.
None via Zoom. We'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And with that, we've concluded this item and we'll proceed to other board matters, which begin with our referral matrix and new referrals. I'll turn that over to the CAO to see what she has to report.
No new referrals today.
Great, thank you. Then we'll jump straight into your administrative officer comments.
Just wanting to thank everybody again as we prepare for next week, which I believe will have some weather event coming through. And I know that most of our staff is on standby, ready to, to address any incoming support that may be needed. And in addition to that, we do have staff, we reached out to staff related to the LA County fires, and many of our team have already signed up. In the event that we are asked to provide assistance, they stand ready to be able to support. support. So I just want to thank everybody for their willingness to support our counties as they are providing mutual aid, but also additional volunteer support to the county of LA. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam CAO. I'm gonna start to my left this week and see if we have any board comments from District Five.
Yes, I've got, I'll get better at making these comments and thinking about it in advance and making some notes, but for now, I just want to really recognize all of the fire districts that are in Los Angeles right now. I know District Five has several, as well as other parts of the county. I'm familiar with Cal Fire, I'm familiar in particular with Cypress, Monterey Regional. I happened to reach out to Chief Sargenti, and he was at the Eaton Fire. I know the city of Monterey has, has folks. And I just want to say to, to everyone in Monterey County that when something like this happens, I mean, for me, what I think of is, what do we need to do? What is, what are the next steps? And so my office is really working on trying to create a system where folks can get their thoughts and their concerns to us easily, because there are, there's a lot of incoming questions that are coming in, and then we will do our best to plan with the community how we can better prepare. And, and I just, I know everybody's feeling this way. It's hard to even imagine what, what is going on. I've got so many friends and family who are impacted by both the Altadena Fire and the Palisades Fire. I've got an aunt and uncle who lost their home on Wednesday of last week, and other family members who've been lucky, but it's just, it's, it's just an unimaginable situation that it gives me in this new role, the impetus to really just keep working hard at this and do what we can as a county to be the most prepared that we can be for when it comes this way. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Church.
Just had to try to check my notes here a little bit. I just want to mention, and let me get my exact date here, that this Wednesday between 5:30 and 8:30, there's a North County Steering Committee, it's their fifth meeting on the Safe Routes to School. They're gonna meet, as I said, at 5:30 till 8:30 at Elkhorn School. And they've had a pretty good turnout over the, over the last few months that they've been meeting on there. So more people beginning involved and being there is always a good thing. I want to share the same, you know, thoughts on the fire and concern about our areas on that. It's obviously, it's a great, great threat out in my area, where we have a lot of dense woodlands, but particularly thousands of acres of eucalyptus trees, which are one of the most vulnerable and trees in the world to catch on fire. It's also, of course, District Five, Supervisor Daniels' area down there, which from the coastline on up to Carmel Valley is very susceptible to fire. And of course, we have in South County, even though it's a little sparsely growing in trees, it's very vulnerable to smoke damage to the, to the vineyards. Also, we've been very fortunate not to have recent major fires down in the Lockwood and Hesperia and other areas that are very dry almost all the time. So this is really a county-wide issue, and as I think, as we've seen what happens in Los Angeles, what we saw in Santa Rosa in the past, it's very easy for urban areas to become also very vulnerable to these fires. So just, I, I think it's something that's, the county needs to really take in a hard look at, and I know I've had some discussions with some other county officials on how we should have a much better prepared plan to, to handle this. And, let me see. And that would be my comments.
All right, we'll go down. Supervisor Askew.
Thank you. I just, again, sharing the comments of my colleagues, that our hearts are grieving with our neighbors in Southern California. Seeing the videos and the stories are, it's almost too much to take in at once, but people are, people are living this. And it definitely does give us, I think, pause to, to, to think about our own emergency preparedness, plans as individuals, as families, as well as for government agencies and as the county. I've been exchanging emails and text messages and social media posts with folks asking about what is, what is our plan here locally, and are we prepared? And what does that plan look like? And where can I learn more about it? And what more do we need to do? So I do think there's, you know, an opportunity for us to maybe, once the dust settles and people have the capacity to pay attention, to maybe share a little bit more about what we, what, what plans we do have in place here, and remind folks what we can do to be prepared, and then to maybe think about what additional actions that we can take as local governments to be fully prepared, because we don't know what's gonna happen next, but we've had our fair share of disasters. And I know that we take a look every time, what we can learn from and do better, and there's always lessons, and we always have opportunity to grow. So my heart will continue to remain with, with our neighbors down south. A couple of events that are coming up this, this weekend, Martin Luther King Day. The Monterey County Black Caucus in Seaside is hosting Mission Possible, Protecting Freedom, Justice, and Democracy in the Spirit of Nonviolence, a march through Seaside, meeting up at the corner of Obama Way in Nocchibuena, in front of our very own Monterey County Social Services Building, to march from that location to the Old Emire Center, where there will be a program that follows. The entire community is welcome to come out and join us, bring your organization. There's lots of information online for anyone who wants to march with the community and then participate in the engaging program to follow. The meetup will be at 11 o'clock. The march begins at noon, with an entire afternoon of activities to follow. We also have in Marina, at the Marina Library, the Monterey County Pops will be performing a free community concert at 11:30, where there'll also be free lunch served in, outside the Monterey County Free Library in Marina at the new, a community park right outside. And then in Seaside, I'm sorry, in Salinas, there'll be a procession beginning at 1:42 West Alasol, ending at City Hall, beginning at 9:00 AM. So we've got a whole bunch of stuff happening, and there's something for everyone to be involved, come out and support community. I also want to just give a, a big shout out to my administrative assistant, Kamar Davis, who's celebrating his successful naturalization as a US citizen. So if we could, I'll be celebrating with him in person up in the Bay Area tomorrow, where he takes his oath with his family. So it's a really big deal and a long time coming. He's worked really hard and couldn't be prouder. So it'll be my honor to stand with him as he takes his oath to become naturalized as a US citizen. So really excited, but really excited for 2025, and I'm so honored to be here with you all. And it was really special to be here in these chambers with everyone. So for everyone who came out last week to celebrate with us, it really was special and such a stark difference from four years ago. I'm just so proud of how far we've come and excited to see where we, what we're able to accomplish in the next four years.
Supervisor Leal.
Thank you very much, and I also want to say happy Martin Luther King Day for everyone, and not only because of his legacy and his leadership for our nation and his fight for civil rights and justice for all, but Dr. King also came to Seaside and to MPC College back in 1961. So he actually visited our county during his lifetime and met with local leaders. So we have a unique history with him visiting Monterey County. I too will join that march. It used to be organized by Pastor Steve London here at the Methodist Church a few blocks away, but now I think Dr. John, so what's it, John Silva is organizing it. As Pastor Steve retired, and they are meeting just out here outside the old Monterey County jail, ending up at Salinas City Hall. So I will be joining those efforts. There is an ongoing event here in Salinas that we want to continue to support in commemoration of Dr. King's and his, his life work and his legacy. And just to weigh in on our brothers and sisters, our fellow Californians in Southern California, it is, we mourn with them, and it is devastating to see all the tragedy and catastrophe of the entire neighborhoods that have been incinerated. It is a sight I think I've never seen in my life. We've seen some really bad fires, but this is among the very worst, and, and we know that this is among the most expensive in our nation's history. And there's gonna be a lot of efforts to help LA rebuild and rebound, and it's, it's gonna require certainly a lot of assistance from our state and federal governments, but certainly from our, the local leaders there, and we have our colleagues, Catherine Barger, Holly Mitchell, and others that are in the same shoes we are, but now needing to really lead during a most difficult time. And I know the fires are not out, they're ongoing, and so we want to commend all those firefighters from the peninsula, from Salinas, from any other departments that have been deployed down there. We thank them for joining in, in those efforts. They are true heroes, all the first responders, and we want to acknowledge their sacrifice and their heroism during this, these difficult times. Oh, on, on emergency planning, because I think our office, Department of Emergency Management is going around meeting with different supervisors, it brings up this, in light of what we see happening today, I think every local government should be really looking about what we could do to better prepare for the worst natural disasters that are gonna be more frequent, whether it's flooding or firefighters. We had, what, 2020, we had three wildfires at the same time. And there's areas to improve. I, I know when, I think it was a sober honest fire, there was a delay on mutual aid, because even under state laws, you have to meet, the fire to be so bad, get to a certain point before other mutual aid could be called in. Well, we know that those few minutes today, depending on how the wind conditions are and the weather is, could be life and death. A fire could grow really fast, and we certainly saw that in the Palisades, how quickly that spread. So with our state legislators, I think, and protocols with their different fire leaders, I think we need to really, really look at all aspects of this plan. And we, I know we have different fire departments, every area, watch the manager's areas, but I think we have to have a, get on the same page effort here of a plan. And I know it's complex, we're a very big county, we have state park land, we have federal agency lands, and it, just a very large geographic space. We have more fire prone areas than others, but we should certainly be having that conversation with our partners. So there's a lot of lessons learned here. And also, I was, I was saying, we also learned a lot of lessons from Paharo, things that we gotta do better, that, that I hope we'll be ready for the next time, because it's not if, there will be a next time eventually, so we need to prepare. For example, when we opened a shelter at the fairgrounds, the food vendor didn't show up. The heating system at Castroville Recreation Center doesn't have one. Those are things that we could be investing now in, so that when we need to use these places, we have vendors that are gonna be ready to get deployed, we're gonna have the heating systems where they know they didn't exist before. All those little things over time to get it on our to-do list, I think are gonna help us be better prepared and better serve the communities when they do have to evacuate and leave their homes. Let's not, let's not wait and repeat the same mistakes over again. So I think, I, I told Kelsey that I hope we'll have that conversation now in light of what we're seeing now, and we could have a conversation about what resources are needed, certainly on her office, getting FEMA reimbursement. It's very complex, we're getting a lot of pushback, tens of millions of dollars down the line. Those are all things that, that we, we need to tackle at the state and federal level so that we can get those resources back, so that, that our funds are replenished, so when the next emergency comes up, we're financially equipped and ready to go as well. So I think, I think all of us in local government and in state government are thinking through this, because we have to, we have to, it's a different reality, we have to take it with all due seriousness, and I think that's what all our constituents out there want to see, that we're, we're getting ready, and we're gonna do everything possible this coming year to get, to get ourselves best set up and, and set up the best plans, so when the next natural disaster hits, hits us, we will be in a much better place than we were the last time around. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Mr. Chair, could I just interject one thing? I just, sorry, I just got notice from Mr. Ishi that it was okay to announce this.
You want to have up?
Yes, probably, unless you...
I was about to shame you for not doing it, please.
This is why I was kind of pausing while I was doing my little, I was trying to get okay on this, and I didn't have it, but I just want to announce that the, the county through the USDA has, is going to be receiving $4 million for infrastructure on the Paharo County Sanitation District, and that is really essential because it's been in much disrepair, and this is really a, you know, it's a great opportunity, and really thank the USDA and the, and the current administration for providing that at this time.
Applause for that, $4 million.
And a special shout out to Maria Gallego Cerera, who made sure that it's coming in red under the deadline, literally one of her last acts as a member of the USDA team. She'll be coming to Paharo Thursday to present that check, so I want to thank her. I also want to share that there will be a press conference before the end of the week as well on the immigration issue, and want to thank Supervisor Leal for taking lead on putting that together. I look forward to joining both those press conferences, so it'll be a press conference week for me. I also want to chime in and thank all those firefighters, first responders, nonprofit leaders, and disaster workers who are showing up in Los Angeles. I've had a couple friends now lose their homes, cousins who have been evacuated, and in fact, we've offered a friend a home up here, and hopefully they'll come up and join us for a few weeks while they get themselves settled. It's tragic and unfortunate for me. It reignited our reminders of feelings during sober honest chimney and so many other fires that we've experienced in South County. And I think our community is resilient because we've gone through it, we've made preparations. One of those that I want to give a shout out to our library team for is recently, they let me know that they tested and confirmed that our San Lucas Library is now generator ready, should we ever end up in need of having power on when there is no power running through the lines. A generator will now power that facility, including AC for that community. It was one of those small pieces and preparations from history and lessons learned that will no longer be a challenge for us in Southern Monterey County. Obviously, we're making other preparations, like building that new library that we're talking about building in Bradley, that will also be that sort of a resource center for a community, while they seem near each other on a map, 20 miles is quite a bit of distance between those communities to cover. And we do have folks like Marlene Dodge, a local who is down in the Los Angeles area with her trailer, helping evacuate horses and animals, and she was there day one and has not left. She's been doing the important work that so many others don't know how to do, so I want to thank her for her commitment to our community as well. And so with that, I know it's a somber thing to talk about, but the resilience and ability of our community, I think looking at what's happening in Los Angeles is something that I'm proud of in this moment. And so I do want to thank everybody who's worked, whether it's firewise communities, our local preparation within different communities who stood up and prepared for instances like this. I can tell you, when we activate now, it's incredible what's in place for folks to be ready, responsive, and know where the resources are, including county facilities, whether we're talking about the fairgrounds in King City, which is county-owned, or the lakes that have been used in the past. I think it's a, an amazing achievement for all of us. I also want to give a shout out to Supervisor Church for working nimbly at the last minute to put together that press conference in Paharo. That's gonna be a big thing for community. And I know that $4 million is nothing to sneeze at, that's a big deal, so shout out to the Public Works team for seeing that through to the very end. And as we head into next week and a week off with a major transition at the federal government, I hope everybody who can, takes a little time to prepare for the changes that are underway, because I did, I want to talk about one last thing, and that was when we met with AG Bonta, he made a comment, towards the end of his comments, it stuck with me. He said, "Our role as local legislators," and for him as a public servant, is to serve the residents and the law, but he also acknowledged that under the law, there's a lot of things that can be done to make life painful. And it was a really stark reminder about what can change, and I think some legislation that's already passed the House is a little scary for communities like ours with the elimination of due process. And so there are things I'm reflecting on, those comments stuck with me. And we talk about waking up at 3:00 AM, and that was one of those comments that he kind of made offhand that has stuck with me the last few days. And so I hope everybody has time to process and work through all those things together and with community, because I think that's what we have going for us. And so with that, I'll turn to council, see if there's anything to report out of close time.
Supervisor Lopez, just last thing on, on preparedness, and I want to commend our staff that have now made the training for employees, so that when they're called to duty, we're all public employees, and sometimes we're called as, to serve as emergency workers. It was a struggle with Paharo, because we walked, we did the door-to-door on a Friday, the levees broke on, at midnight, it was a Saturday morning, early Saturday morning, and trying to set everything up. But it, so it was a struggle getting in some of our employees. I think the training in advance, the expectations making part of our culture, I think is a good thing. So I want to commend the staff that did that training, I think it's a good thing, but that was just one of those other areas that we need to do better at for the next time around as well, because it did, it did take at least a couple days before we could ramp staff to fully be functioning at the, at the Santa Cruz County Fairgrounds.
Counsel.
There is no reportable action from the Water Resources Agency or, and the Board of Supervisors closed sessions.
of Supervisors closed sessions.
All right. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.